Call this meeting to order. Do we have a closed session report?
We don't have any items to report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is where I usually look out into the audience and find someone that I know and invite them up to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And honestly, our guest tonight, I don't know any of you personally, although I'd love to get to know you. But do I have a member of the Youth Council here? Would you come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Littster?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Are there any items for agenda review? Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. And seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is Item 1D1, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring April 2024 as Earthquake Preparedness Month. And Emergency Services Manager Eileen Connors is here to present this item, and accepting the proclamation are the disaster service workers.
Valley residents have witnessed earthquakes that have resulted in property damage, injuries, and loss of life, and significant financial impact. And whereas, as many as 10,000 earthquakes occur each year in California, and mitigation measures can save lives and speed the return to normalcy. And whereas, in this month alone, earthquakes have struck California, Taiwan, and New York. Therefore, Californians are encouraged to leverage cutting-edge technology designed to alert them before shaking begins. Through the earthquake warning California system, including the My Shake app, Android earthquake alerts, and wireless emergency alerts. And whereas, Simi Valley residents and employees are encouraged to participate in the Community Emergency Response, or CERT, training to build their resiliency skills to better protect themselves and help their neighbors during an earthquake and/or other crisis. And whereas, community members are encouraged to visit the Office of Emergency Services page at simivalley.org to create a My Emergency Plan personalized to their household and business in order to be prepared in the event of a disaster and to enroll in VC Alert for emergency notifications. Now, therefore, the month of April 2024 is hereby proclaimed Earthquake Preparedness Month in the city of Simi Valley to encourage its residents to be prepared in the event of an earthquake and to help build a resilient community. Presented this 22nd day of April 2024.
So, being prepared for the next earthquake, I know about a month after the last earthquake, everybody was prepared, right? How many have forgotten all about that in the meantime? And so that's just a reminder that, you know, we all need to be thinking about that. But it's good to know that we have these guys standing ready at any time. We do appreciate that. So we appreciate the time you guys put into it, into being ready and to help the city out in need. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D2, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring April 22, 2024 as Earth Day. And Public Works Director Ron Fuchiwaki is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and Councilmembers. Before I read the proclamation, I would like to mention that this Friday, the Park District is having an Earth Day event at Arroyo Park from 3:30 to 5:30. And they're also having an Arbor Day event at Sequoia Park from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. As well as, the Montevista Independent Learning and Homeschool Academy will be having an Earth Day and plant sale event on Saturday the 27th. So, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Simi Valley is a vision of great natural beauty and the community takes great pride in preserving its breathtaking surroundings. And whereas globally, there are issues that threaten the environment and its natural resources, or treasures, I'm sorry. And whereas, communities around the world have developed initiatives to reverse these risks to the environment. And whereas, all people regardless of race, gender, income, or geography have the right to a healthy, sustainable environment. And whereas, the people of Simi Valley stand together with all of the world's interests to preserve and protect the environment locally and globally. And whereas, Earth Day has been recognized as a day to proclaim a commitment to environmental protection that is carried out throughout the year. Now, therefore, April 22, 2024 is hereby proclaimed Earth Day to encourage all Simi Valley residents, businesses, and institutions to support and participate in Earth Day activities in recognition of our commitment to our local and global environment. Presented this 22nd day of April 2024.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D3, Presentation of Certificates of Completion to the Spring CERT Graduating Classes. And Emergency Services Manager Eileen Connors is presenting this item.
Ding, again. Tonight, we are recognizing the 58 Community Emergency Response Team CERT graduates from the spring from the spring 2024 training classes that were conducted in English and for the first time in Spanish. This year marks the 30th year of the city hosting CERT training, which is offered to the Simi Valley community at no charge through a partnership with the Ventura County Fire Department. This was also the first time that CERT training had ever been conducted in Spanish in East Ventura County, made possible by the Community Development Block Grant received by the cities of Moore Park, Simi Valley, and Thousand Oaks. Students from all three cities took part in the Spanish session. With the addition of these graduates, over 1,600 Simi Valley residents and workers have completed 18 hours in hands-on disaster response training classes and an in-person final that was this Saturday, simulating responding to a disaster. A special thank you to Ventura County Fire Department Captain Robert Minor and Spanish-language CERT instructor Ramon Gonzalez, who conducted the weekly trainings for the city, and CERT Program Director Steve Lazenby, who organized the final drill simulating responding to a major earthquake. We thank VCFD for their partnership. The city's volunteer disaster service workers support the CERT trainings. The volunteers with us tonight are Phil Ankrum, Ed Baker, Jorge Curio, Melissa Heineman, Ray Perkins, and Tech Reserve Bob Moss. We thank them for their service. The graduates receive six weeks of training on a variety of topics, including disaster preparedness, disaster medical operations, search and rescue, fire suppression, team management, small group leadership, terrorism awareness, and disaster psychology. The CERT program plays an important role in preparing residents for disaster response and potential evacuations. For example, in 2019, the EZ Fire interrupted the fall CERT training, and those students were called into action to help the community with their newly acquired skills. We thank these graduates for their dedication to the program and congratulate them on their graduation. We ask them to become champions for CERT and encourage their neighbors to take CERT training, so they will have help when a disaster strikes. The next CERT class will be offered in fall 2024. Visit the Emergency Services page on the city's website for more information. At this time, graduates, please come forward as your name is called to receive your certificate. Jessica Aguirre? While they're all wonderful, we might want to hold the applause till the end. Lorenzo Aguirre? Dulce Alonso? Jorge Andrade? Hector Arichiga? Catherine Baldaritas? Keith Bauer? Cynthia Bazan? German Bazan? Nathan Blaine? Joe Bowman? Martin Campos? Jaden Carsonella? Karina Cordova? Rafaela Cruz? Melissa Diaz Strahan? Jack D'Onofrio? Dahlia Duarte? Gina Duarte? Enwan Duarte? It was a family affair. Itzel Franco Overa? Richard Galitz? Fernando Garcia Osorio? Alejandra Garza? Timothy Gaidos? Richard Geem? Dulce Gonzalez? Gabriela Gonzalez? Linda Gould? John Guusan? Gabby Guzman? Joseph Henry? Loretta Henry? Maria Hurtado? Oscar Hurtado? Kenneth Christensen? Jeff Lando? Edgar Lucio? Alma Mendez? Michael Morissette? Christopher Parker? David Pastrana? Enrique Quezada? Yesenia Ramirez Mendez? Arthur Reed? Richard Salerno? Santash Singh?
Good job.
Ohm Singh? Dustin Smith? Marta Vernal? And Maria Vicente?
Well, thanks to all of you for committing the time to go and do this and join the many others that have been through this. I happen to be a graduate of Class Number Two. And so, and I actually enjoyed it. I thought it was a great experience. I hope you guys did too. But thank you all for taking the time to do this. Well done, everyone.
I also am a CERT graduate, so thank each and every one of you for doing this. And Jaden, I remember you from the car show.
Mayor, could we maybe do a group picture and have everyone come forward? Is that asking too much? I just think, you have to understand, we have honored other CERT graduates in the past, and it's always amazing. We have never seen such participation. And to be honest, it's quite moving and it just makes me appreciate that we are in good hands in our community, that you are all willing to come and do this and basically be there to help protect our community. And so, anyway, thank you. I do. Everyone come down, come on down.
Everyone that would like to be a part of that photo, come on down.
I just think this should be in the acorn. I don't know if the acorn reporter's here, but we'll be behind you.
I'll stand back here.
Do a prayer.
Right, yeah. Happy to.
Okay, good. Or lunch. I'm coming up for a photo.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D4, Presentation of a Proclamation Proclaiming May 2, 2024 as Day of Prayer in the city of Simi Valley. And Senior Management Analyst Heidi DiNardo is here to present this item. And accepting the proclamation is Pastor Thomas Sheer, Cornerstone Church Student Ministries Director.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. Tonight, it is my honor to present the proclamation for Day of Prayer, which reads as follows. Whereas National Day of Prayer was created in 1952 by a joint resolution of Congress and signed into law by President Harry S. Truman. And whereas, in 1988, legislation was unanimously ratified by both Houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan stating that the National Day of Prayer was to be observed on the first Thursday of every May. And whereas, the Simi Valley faith community prays for grace upon the community, city leaders, school board members, area businesses, schools, and the spiritual needs of the community. And whereas, it is an opportunity for the faith community to encourage unity among the churches and faith-based nonprofit organizations to be a viable resource to the city. Now, therefore, the city of Simi Valley hereby proclaims May 2, 2024 as Day of Prayer, which gives all the residents of our community an opportunity to continue to offer thanks and acknowledge all who work so hard on behalf of the citizens of our city and to observe this day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance. Presented this 22nd day of April 2024.
Well, I just, first off, I just want to say what an honor it is. And while we recognize that all goodness ultimately comes from God, we also recognize the means of grace, which is y'all. I know it's often those working within different offices are called public servants, but according to Romans 3, you are called servants of the Lord. And I recognize that and just want to honor you and say thank you. Also, want to invite you, May 2, we'll be out here in the courtyard to come and pray. Love to pray over you in person if you show up. We'll pray for you. So, even if you don't, we will. But also pray for our country and pray for God's blessing and goodness and grace to see people flourish. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for this item this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A1, Selection of Two City Council Members to Conduct Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Pair Transit Advisory Committee Interviews. And Deputy Public Works Director of Transit, Ben Gonzalez, is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and Councilmembers. The Americans with Disabilities Act Pair Transit Advisory Committee is comprised of seven members appointed by the City Council, including five members statuses and two alternates. The committee advises the city on issues such as service policy, availability, and access stability associated with the transportation of persons with disabilities. Four members and one alternate position on the committee will become open when their term expires on April 30. will become open when their term expires on April 30, 2024. Five applications were received in the recruitment process. Staff is requesting the City Council appoint two council members to interview and nominate applicants for the ADA Pair Transit Committee. This concludes staff report, and staff is available for questions.
Well, any interested parties? I actually sit on this committee, so I don't know that I am the right one for this. I don't know.
And I was on it last, last time, so, trying to see, let's see. Fred and I did it together last year, last time, so.
I have no problem doing it.
And Mike?
Mike be challenged by the dates, because you say in their terms expire when?
April, but the next committee meeting is until July.
Oh, okay, sure.
Into July, so, we would have time.
So, we have one. Mike? Okay, I'll do it with you, Mike. Okay, there you go.
Yeah, I nominate Mayor Fred Thomas and Council, Council Member Mike Judge. To conduct ADA Pair Transit Advisory Committee interviews.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 3A2, Selection of One City Council Member to Serve on the Interview and Nomination Panel for Returning Youth Council Members. And Management Analyst Kristin Miller is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. The youth council is comprised of 24 members who advise the city council on issues of concern to local youth. The next regular term of appointments is scheduled to commence on July 1. Up to nine of the youth council members may be selected for retention for each new term. Eighteen youth council members are eligible for reappointment. Therefore, it is estimated that approximately two and a half hours will be needed to conduct the interviews. Mayor Protim Rhodes, most recently served on the interview and nomination panel last May. It is recommended that the city council select one city council member to serve on the interview and nomination panel for prospective returning youth council members to fill up to nine positions on the youth council. The panel will also include the youth council coordinator and up to two non-returning youth council members. This concludes. The report and staff is available to answer any questions at this time.
Councilmember Lutster?
Actually, I was going to say that I am willing to volunteer, but I have to tell you that this is the absolute hardest panel anyone will sit on, because all of them are qualified. And if I understand you correctly, there are eighteen returning and only nine, fifty percent, half of them, may be reappointed, and that's painful, because you'd like them all back, I know. But I am willing to serve unless someone else would like to volunteer.
I move Councilwoman, Councilwoman Lutster.
Second.
To serve on this committee.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 3C1, Informational Presentation by Youth Council Member Tonvi Iju.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. My name is Tonvi Iju, and I'm currently a junior at Simi Valley High School. I am proud to be representing the Simi Valley Youth Council and presenting our accomplishments throughout the past two months and what we have planned in the coming months. We thank you for your continued support of our program as we continue to make an impact on our community. We are happy to report that in collaboration with Santa Susana High School's International Club, our community-wide multicultural fair labeled Roots and Rhythm: A Multicultural Fair Embracing Our Diversity was a success. With over fifteen booths, thirteen performances, and close to two hundred attendees, we were able to bring together a variety of cultures and backgrounds, all celebrating the diverse richness that enhances our community. The booths offered a glimpse into the unique traditions, cuisines, and customs of different cultures, fostering understanding and appreciation among attendees. From TED Talks, speaking on the importance of embracing one's culture, to dances varying from Philippine Stick Dance, K-pop performances, to Indian and Hawaiian cultural dances, these performances by students transported attendees to different corners of the globe, highlighting the universal language of music and dance. Overall, this event successfully laid the foundation to understanding and appreciating each other's cultures, one celebration at a time. Speaking of successful events, our sixth annual talent show took place on April 17. This sold-out event was a night filled with twenty-seven incredible performances that showcased the immense talent we have here in Simi Valley. From singers belting out powerful tunes to dancers mesmerizing the audience with their moves, and even magicians wowing everyone with their tricks, there was something for everyone. We want to thank the Cultural Arts Center and the amount of work they do every year to help support this wonderful event. We would also like to thank and recognize the following event sponsors: Our Diamond Sponsor, Jordan &amp; Bain Landscape Architects; our Platinum Sponsors, Adventist Calt Simi Valley, Alt Cooking Hub, Kelly Evans &amp; Associates, Sports Fitness Kid Glove Boxing Foundation, Presto Pasta, and Simi Pacific Building Materials, along with our Silver Sponsors and silent auction donors. A special thank you to our talent show judges, Anthony Angelini, John Dantona, and Leonie Laguna, for the tough job of selecting the winners for each category. We also want to thank all of our volunteers, participants, Samor Exposure for videotaping the show, and the many supporters from our community, as this event could not have been as successful as it was without them. It's their collective effort that made the talent show a night to remember. If you're a student or you know a student that may at times feel overwhelmed with school or home or other pressures, we urge you or them to attend our Teen Wellness Event next month. Stress is increasingly prevalent among students, and the Simi Valley Youth Council is committed to offering resources and a supportive space for these students to address these challenges. The second annual Teen Wellness Night, organized in collaboration with the Simi Valley Unified School District Tobacco Use Prevention Education, and the Simi Valley Public Library, is scheduled for Friday, May 17, at the Civic Center Campus Courtyard. We invite clubs, organizations, and businesses interested in hosting booths to visit www.bit.ly/2024teenwellness to reserve a free space, or email youthcouncil@simivalley.org for more information. For those who are interested in attending this event, we encourage you to bring friends and family to share in the experience of this fantastic event. Behind every empowered youth stands a mentor or mentors that provide unwavering support. To our esteemed City Council, we cannot thank you enough for the tremendous support you provide us with, guaranteeing success of our events such as the multicultural fair and the annual talent show. You provide us with the encouragement and resources we need to flourish, ensuring that our voices are heard and our potential is realized. On behalf of the Simi Valley Youth Council, we are honored and grateful to be working with such an amazing group of people, and once again, we cannot thank you enough for your constant support. For students that will be entering 7th through 12th grade, applications for the 2024-2025 Youth Council term are due by this Friday, April 26. For more information or to apply, visit www.simi valley.org/youthcouncil. In closing, I would kindly ask that everyone please follow and support the Youth Council on Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube, @Simivalleyouthcouncil, and now on TikTok, @svyc2929. I'm now open to any questions or comments you might have, and look forward to your continued guidance and partnership. Thank you for empowering us to make a difference.
Councilwoman Lutster?
Thank you for recognizing me, Mayor Protim Rhodes. Tonvi, that was a wonderful report. And as you were giving it, what I realized is that you also didn't touch on all the things that the Youth Council has done, just some of the highlights. But I was, Saturday, I went to the Youth, the Employment Job Fair, and you had a booth there, and you were there all morning, all day, helping set up and tear down and make that all happen. Anyway, we are so grateful for the efforts of the Youth Council and appreciate all that you do, and if you would communicate that to the whole, the whole council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I wanted to say thanks. You thanked us, but it goes the other direction. The Youth Council is one of the most dynamic and outgoing and active groups within the city, and what you guys accomplish and prove to all of us older generation that we're in good hands. And when you can do that for us, makes everything calm and wonderful. So, as much as we can support you, great, but you do great things for the city and for us. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 4, Public Statements. Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for this item this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for testimony on public hearings on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the city clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which the call was submitted to speak for this public testimony, item 5, for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Comments shall be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of the city staff related to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6. Item 5A, a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant allocations and the Draft Fiscal Year 2024-25 Action Plan. And Senior Management Analyst Julia Ramirez is here to present this item.
Before we begin, are there any ex parte communications to report? Then please begin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. On March 13, 2024, the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee recommended that the City Council approve the draft fiscal year 2425 action plan with the committee's preliminary funding recommendations. In CDBG, or Community Block Grant, there are three categories of allowable expenditures: public service, capital improvements, and administration. Public services are funded on a two-year funding basis, with this year being year two. Therefore, no public service applications were solicited, only ones for capital improvement projects. After hosting an application workshop, the city received a formal application that was later withdrawn. HUD has not yet published the entitlement amounts for fiscal year 2425. Therefore, the city used the entitlement amount for 2324 fiscal year as an estimate. In the current fiscal year, the city received approximately $625,000. As required by HUD regulations, the draft action plan for 2425 fiscal year was released for a 30-day review, public review period, on March 22. The draft action plan contains the preliminary allocations. It is recommended that the City Council adopt the committee's recommendations and make the final determination on projects and programs to be funded for fiscal year 2425, and authorize the submission to HUD of the action plan. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Councilmember Lutster?
Thank you, Hulley. Appreciate your report. Just a couple of questions. Will you remind us again why we are on a two-year cycle for the public service funds?
So, years, a couple of years back, the program was modified to receive applications for public services only every other year. This would reduce the amount of administrative work, more so on the part of the agencies. So, even though the entitlement comes yearly, provided that we receive the funding and that they are complying with all the regulations, submitting the reports, and spending the money, they don't have to apply on year two.
And that's understood. I guess, and my follow-up question then, to your knowledge, were there any inquiries from anyone who would like to have been considered but were not because, eligible because it was in the second year?
No.
Okay, that, and that was, and then, this might be speculative, but you mentioned that the one request for capital improvement project funding was withdrawn. Do we know why that was withdrawn, or are we at liberty to?
After meeting with them on several occasions, it was determined that they would not be able to comply with what HUD was requiring.
Okay. I know it's very stringent, their reporting requirements. Okay.
Thank you. That's it.
Sure.
All right, nothing else. At this time, I would like to open the hearing to anyone in the City Council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, we have no public testimony for this item this evening.
The hearing is now closed. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee's funding recommendation and make the final determination of projects and programs to be funded in fiscal year 2425, and authorize the submission of the fiscal year 2425 action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Next is item 5B, a public hearing to consider a general plan amendment pre-screening review of GPPS-2024-0001 Allied Realty Partners LLC, a request to change the general plan land use designation from moderate-density residential to industrial for three residential zone parcels north of Smith Road and east of Cooner Drive. And Deputy Environmental Services Director Sean Gibson, Associate Planner Zarui Chaparayan, and Senior Planner Naren Gunasakera are here to present this item.
Before we begin, are there any ex parte communications to report? Seeing none, staff, go ahead and proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. Tonight's general plan pre-screening request is to allow authorization to proceed with future studies and applications to develop a movie studio expansion adjacent to the existing allied studios on Smith Road. As identified under recently adopted Simi Valley Economic Development Strategic Plan, expansion of the filming industry activities was identified as an opportunity to promote economic growth in the city. This general plan pre-screening hearing is just the first step in the development process, which provides an applicant feedback whether the request is merit for further study. Again, it is important to note that the City Council is not approving the development for the project tonight, but if authorized to move forward, the applicant would return with a complete planning application and design drawings. Zarui Chaparayan, our associate planner, will now make tonight's presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and honorable City Council members. Tonight, we are reviewing a request for a general plan prescreen for three properties located along Smith Road. The applicant, Allied Realty Partners, is requesting a general plan pre-screening authorization to move forward with a formal application to change the general plan land use designation from moderate-density residential to industrial for three residential parcels totaling 2.55 acres located along the north side of Smith Road, east of Cooner Drive. The site is accessible from Smith Road. The three parcels under review tonight are all owned by Realty, Allied Realty Partners. The parcel highlighted in blue is a movie studio lot also owned by Allied, Allied Realty. The westernmost parcel is developed with a residence, and the remaining two parcels are vacant. A county watershed protection district water body separates the two southern parcels from the northern parcel. The subject lots are part of a future development for a movie studio campus, which will include sound stages, support buildings for mill shops, storage areas, and general production offices. The rezoning of the three subject parcels to the north side of Smith Road will be for parking. Note that the parcel shown in orange on the south side of Smith Road has an existing entitlement, PD-S-1039, for a 200,000-square-foot studio building. On screen is an aerial image of the project site looking east across the site. The three residential lots are outlined in red. The current land use designation for the site is moderate-density residential, which would allow for the development of moderate-density would allow for the development of moderate-density detached, single-family or multifamily dwellings. This request is to change the land use designation from moderate-density residential to industrial, which would allow the lots to be utilized as parking areas for the future movie studio The change to industrial for the three lots would allow for a variety of manufacturing, service, and related business uses, including a movie studio campus and parking. The development and operation of the site would need to adhere to the development standards and ensure compatibility with surrounding uses. If the general plan pre-screen is approved to proceed, the applicant will prepare their formal application for this conceptual proposal, movie studio campus in which Allied Studios is proposing to expand its operations with a 243,000 gross square foot mixed-use project on its studio campus. The project will include eight new 20,000-square-foot sound stages, supported by an 80,000-square-foot multi-level building for a mill shop, storage areas, and general production offices. As previously mentioned, the rezoning of the three subject parcels to the north side of Smith Road will be for parking. Further code amendments and/or a specific plan will be required to develop the project site. The site plan on screen is a potential project for future review. It is not for review tonight. The following criteria is used when considering pre-screening requests. One, the proposed land use change to industrial will complement the surrounding industrial and movie production uses surrounding the project site. Surrounding uses include vacant parcels, a park and hiking trail, industrial uses, and some residential homes to the east. The proposed land use amendment would be compatible with the goals and policies of the general plan by prioritizing economic development through diverse and high-paying job creation and retention, business partnerships, tourism, and promotion for the city. The strategic location of the site has the potential to attract the entertainment industry as it falls within the LA, the Los Angeles 30-mile studio zone. This zone makes the region financially competitive for entertainment production. As previously noted, film production and sound stages were identified as a high-priority industry for development in the city, per the 2024 Nadelson Dale Group's economic report. And lastly, in the last 12 months, there has been no other amendment in the same general area that have been considered and denied, nor has there been new land use studies or policies adopted. Based on the analysis required for a general plan pre-screen, staff recommends the city council authorize the applicant to file the general plan amendment as requested. This concludes the presentation, and we are available for questions.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you. Appreciate your report. My, could you put back up the picture, the aerial, the, going back to the one that shows the actual, yeah, and so I guess my, no, the one that was, yes, this one. So I guess my question is actually, the usage of the, are these, this is zoned residential, and those are residences right now? Is that correct? And access to these homes are on Smith Road, correct?
That's correct.
Is that the only access to these homes? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so those, okay, I just want, and I guess my next question then becomes, and this is one of maybe of ignorance, is it required, in order to put a parking lot on residential property, does it have to be zoned industrial? You cannot put parking on residential without a zoning, without a zoning change?
Generally, a parking lot requires a commercial or industrial zone.
Generally, always? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
If you're, if you're developing a church, which could be in a residential zone.
Right, right.
It wouldn't require a parking lot, but if it's a, it's a parking lot that's supporting an industrial use.
So it's because it's a supporting industrial use?
Yes.
If it were just a standalone parking lot, let's say you bought your neighbor's property next to you, you could put a parking lot there for all of your 12 kids that live in your house. I'm just, I'm being facetious.
Theoretically.
I don't have 12 kids.
You would probably need a permit to do that. That would not.
But it wouldn't require a general plan amendment?
Um, no.
Okay, I just, I'm just trying to understand. I realize this is pre-screening, and I, and I understand the purpose, et cetera, but I'm just trying to, just understand better our.
Trying to align the uses.
Yeah, how line, okay.
That are involved.
I can see for aligning the uses, okay.
Yeah.
But I just want, trying to understand how necessary, or if it's a requirement, is really, I was trying to understand.
Yeah, generally, the parking lot must go with the intended use. In this case, it's a industrial use. The parking lot supports the industrial use, so therefore, the general plan amendment and zoning would be required.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
You have a question, Rhodes?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just have a couple. I know this is pre-screening, and I don't know how much, or preliminary, I don't know how much this goes out to the public, but have we received any thoughts or concerns about residential owners in that area about this amendment, or has it not been out there to be, you know, talked about yet?
We have received phone calls and a few letters.
Okay. So should we move forward with the proposed general plan amendment? Then there would be public hearings, and there would be opportunity for that feedback, correct?
Correct.
I also have a question about if there would be any impact of converting these lots from medium-density residential on our RENA numbers in our allocation where we had, we had designated these lots for, for housing, and now we won't.
And these sites are not in the city's housing element in terms of specific properties to be included in the RENA.
They're not.
They are residentially zoned, however, they're not identified specifically as sites to achieve the RENA numbers.
Okay, thank you. And then, I'm going to use the pointer, because it'll be the first time in a year and a half I've actually done it. These lots down here, I, I was confused. I wasn't understanding what the zoning for those were, and right now, they're just currently vacant. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're semi, semi-vacant. I know the one to the north is vacant, the southerly one was being used for horse boarding. I believe that may have also ceased in the past few years.
So the current zoning is recreational and commercial?
Okay, I got it. Recreational, commercial?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Those are all my questions for the preliminary.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did receive an email shortly before our meeting started tonight, and I would assume that these things will be considered. We had somebody that's concerned about the possibility of flash flooding in the area because it's the base of the hills, and they were also talking about possibly making, prohibiting the use of cement and asphalt to reduce the various impacts of construction. So all of that will be considered when it goes to, before the planning commission and everything, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open the hearing to anyone in the council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, we have no public testimony for this item this evening.
I see someone raising his hand.
The applicants are here first, if you may want to call for the applicants.
Listen, okay. All right, so I invite the applicants to come up and speak. And then, if you could come down and fill out a card in the meantime.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and council members. My name is Melvin Gebb.
My name is Kevin Gilmer.
We're with Gensler, the architects and designers for the proposed project. First of all, thank you for this opportunity to present the project. I know the agenda item tonight is about the, specifically about the three parcels, but we wanted to give a brief presentation about the, the project overview, to give a little context. A little bit of history. Allied Studios has been calling Simi Valley home since 2003, having served as a studio for hundreds of mainstream productions, including feature films, television movies, series, commercials, and music videos. Production in California is directly responsible for over 200,000 jobs, with $28.4 billion in wages. In 2022, there were 4,199 production days in Ventura County alone, with a total economic impact estimated to be at least $90 million. With its, with studios' expansion plans, Allied Studios is situated to bring even more jobs, spending, and huge overall financial enhancements directly to Simi Valley.
So since there was such a great introduction, we're going to go through this presentation pretty quickly, but as you, as you guys recognize, the site location is near the intersection of Coonour and Smith Road. It's, it's right, kind of in, on the, by the train tracks and, oh, thank you. And the parcels that are in question regarding the parking across the street from the existing studio lot. This is another view looking at the location of the project. This is a view towards the project as well. And we also brought along some site photos to give you kind of a sense of the scale of the neighborhood from the street locations. And this is a view towards the site from, from Coonour as you get towards San Susana Pass Road. So these are, this is a, some images of the project studio lot that's there today with the back lot, and we also have some images of the parking that's across the street in the lower left corner. And these are just, give you kind of a variety of what happens within the studio lot building that's there today.
This is just a, a lot of duplicates of the information presented earlier. Again, the existing Allied Studios facility is on, on the right-hand side. The proposed new studio lot is on the left-hand side, and then the, the three parcels up in the northwest corner. And this is, this is just representing the primary thoroughfare that runs between the studios and, and the proposed parking area.
Probably noted at this point, too, that the intention is to move the primary entrance away from the existing Allied Studios, near the proposed parking areas, to kind of relieve the road from any further traffic. So we're really trying to get it located so that it's nearer the intersection of Coonour and Smith Road.
And it was described earlier, in terms of the program, the, there's a total of five, five buildings. You can see the four in the salmon color. There are pairs of 20,000 square foot stages, and the one on the left-hand side, the long vertical bar-looking building, that's a multi-story, four-story, which includes a mill on the first floor, flex space, and office spaces on the elevated floors for production offices and support.
And it should be noted that the mill is only used for set pieces that will be used inside of the stages, so it's not for production of any means like that.
These are just plans of the proposed support building, showing again on the ground floor mill, production office, support spaces on the second, third, and fourth floors of the building, total of 80,000 square feet.
This gives you kind of an overall scale. As you can see on the ground floor, there's a slightly higher scale to the building for the mill spaces, and then as you get to the upper levels, that's all production-supporting So this is the gate that we're moving away from the existing studio lot building near to the intersection of Coonour and Smith. And we're really trying to create a sense of a production studio lot in this location with this gated entrance, like you would find in a typical studio lot. And then, the building beyond, like we mentioned, is the mill, and then the production-supporting state offices above.
This is just typical elevation of the, the sound stages. They're all pretty identical to each other. Concrete, top concrete articulated with form liners and, and a color palette that's complementary to, to the adjacent area.
And we would note that because we're so early in this process, we haven't done any outreach on this effort, but we would be willing to look at a different color palette if, if there is one that is more appropriate for this location. But this kind of gives you a flavor of what you would typically find at a production studio lot that supports film and television. Just some general street elevations here, showing the proposed studio lot entrance with the stages, and it should also be noted that there will be a landscape buffer maintained between the existing stages and Smith Road. And that's it. Any questions for us? We're here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Council, any questions of the applicant? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Actually, I just have one quick question. I'm sorry. I apologize, only because I was having trouble coming up with the name. Where is this in relationship to Corriganville, which is where obviously, this, it's right next to it, is it not? Is it down, and, okay, and so that's where obviously filming occurred for, and filming still occurs. Is Allied involved in any way with activities at Corriganville? Allied Studios? Right.
My name's Brian Gordon. I'm with Allied. Yeah, we support Corriganville. There's been a lot of filming up there, stuff that's with us. They go to Corriganville just to get the open landscape and all that, so it's benefited both parties. But once upon a time in Hollywood, we brought them in, they ended up being at Corriganville for eight months, nine months, whatever it total was. So, yeah, we, we don't have any direct, but we do refer and, and utilize both facilities.
Very good. Thank you. I just want to try to understand the relationship. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You have a card now?
Yes, we have one speaker, Brian Doherty.
Good evening, council members. Could you bring that graphic back up where it shows the, the street with the red parcel? Okay, that one. Okay, directly to the right of that red line is our property. And from that property, east all the way to Corriganville, is approximately five residential houses. All these residents have been there 40 years plus. I just flat-out say, we, we are very opposed to this. They're slowly surrounding us. So, and that property right there, I look out my bedroom window, and it's that far away, and I would be looking at cars, they'd be coming all hours of the night. There'd be lighting there that would disrupt everything, so I just want you to take in consideration, all those families that have been there a lot longer than the studios, maybe not Corriganville, but a lot longer than those studios. Give them some, you know, you're longtime residents, some consideration with this. And that's with the sound stage, everything. It just keeps getting bigger and bigger, and, and the traffic's getting more and more, so. It just keeps getting bigger and bigger, and the traffic's getting more and more, so I'd just like you to consider that. Thank you. Brian Doerdy. We were here opposing the soundstage about a year ago, so we don't know where that's gone. Haven't heard anything about that. So, but the parking lot, it's literally five feet from my window. So, please consider it. Thank you.
No, Mr. Mayor, that was the only speaker card.
Councilmember Judge?
Real quick on the lots that you have marked in red. What's their zoning again right now? If I believe I heard it right, it was multifamily?
Moderate density.
Moderate density. So technically, we could have apartment buildings on those parcels. Thank you.
Does staff deserve to respond to anything?
Yes, Mayor Thomas, members of the council. Regards to the public's comments, whenever there's a change in zone between residential properties and commercial industrial properties, there are various factors for, I would say, mitigations to create buffers, setbacks, things of that nature. If this were to proceed tonight, the app would have to put together an application, and part of the review includes a thorough environmental review on impacts to the surroundings. We try to look at impacts and compatibility with adjacent uses. That will all be studied. So we are aware of the existing homes there, and staff would look at those items as part of the review.
So in other words, in the process, we could require a buffer zone with trees and whatever else to sit it away from the next property?
Yeah. Certainly through that process, you know, we will ask the applicant and work with the neighbors to come up with the possibility of, to lessen the potential impacts.
Okay. Thank you.
Sean, if I remember correctly, it's a 20-foot setback between residential and commercial properties, is that correct?
There's usually a 20-foot structural setback for a parking lot. There's not exactly a set setback. Part of this opportunity is that they may have to prepare a specific plan. There will be a number of code changes to make this project work as conceptually proposed, so there could be additional setbacks or buffers imposed.
So this hearing is now closed. Any further comments or questions from city council members?
Real quick.
Councilmember Judge?
The reason I was asking about the residential zoning, the status of the zoning of those parcels is because if they were to remain the way they are right now, and the environment we live in in the state of California, and the state telling us what we can and can't do with the land we zone, you could possibly be looking at multi-unit apartments on those properties right now. I think you, you look at it like this, it's not the best situation, but if you have landscape buffering between the parking lot and your property, it's a lot better than looking at somebody's apartment building.
It's not zoned.
Recultural, it's owned multifamily. We can mitigate the lighting through the process we go through. We can't have, we can't have a back-and-forth conversation. I was just explaining why I was asking that question.
The hearing's now closed, so, thank you. All right, and we'll now entertain a motion.
I move to authorize GPSS-2024-001 for further processing as a general, formal general plan amendment.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item seven, the consent calendar, and there is one resolution for your consideration this evening. Consent item three, resolution number 2024-09, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley implementing a schedule of sanitation rates and fees and authorizing the County of Ventura to collect residential sanitation service rates on the tax roll for
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a request first. Mayor Protem Rhodes? No? Okay. Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 10A, city council member reports.
Well, this should be relatively short. It was only one week. Councilmember Littster, please.
And I will actually start my comments to the residents who are leaving, who are here. I just want to say one thing, one thing to you. I understand your frustration. It's a beautiful area that you live in. I wanted to commend, and this is simply a pre-screening. There's a lot more conversation, so, and the pre-screening level is much smaller than when it goes to the Planning Commission, so I just want to encourage you to come and have your voices be heard. I will commend what I saw in terms of development, that it appears that if, if this goes forward, they are trying to move all of the entrance away from your homes so that, so that access to the studios moves further away from you. But I just wanted to make it clear that this is a pre-screening, but I understand it's very frustrating, and please keep making your voice be heard at the Planning Commission and as, as the conversation continues. But it is my report time, and I, thank you. Just a few things, I know it's only been one week, but a couple of things did happen that I'd like to, like to reference. Actually, the one thing I wanted, first of all, to thank city manager Brian Gabler for his time on April 18th. I always appreciate his willingness to visit with me, and it's, it's short-lived, that time that we have, so I encourage all of you council members to get the brain drained from him so you can get all that information. So thank you, Brian. It is always much appreciated. I referenced this during the youth council, but on Saturday, April 20th, I did attend the youth job fair, and it was, I just want to commend those who put it together. It was really outstanding. In fact, I went there just to, just to see what was going on. I walked up and saw the check-in table, talked to a few people, and I thought, my son needs to be here. And I immediately got back in my car and drove home, and I called him and said, I won't mention his name because he'd be mortified, saying, "Son, you need to come down and just see what your opportunities are." And he was a good sport, in five minutes, put on decent clothes, and came back with me. And so I got the real experience from the perspective of a participant, which was, which was very good. And so I just wanted to commend, basically, you arrived, and they had packets of information. Then there was orientation. I think Greg Seymour was the one that my son talked to. Al Brown was also giving these orientation. Then you had the opportunity to go into mock interviews, where they, they had excellent opportunity to practice their interviewing skills. And then they went inside the library, and thank you, Kelly, for opening up the library for this beautiful facility, and they got to visit with potential employers throughout the city. It was just very well done. I will tell you that my son talked to a handful of people, and Thursday, he's going back for a second interview with somebody, so it was on the cuff, very, very effective. And I had nothing to do with that, I want to be very clear. I just stood in the back and watched, so, anyway. Also on that Saturday, I spoke at a women's conference. But the third thing I want to mention on that Saturday, April 20th, I had the pleasure of attending Royal High School's last performance of their musical Mean Girls. Now, it's currently on Broadway, I confess, I was afraid it was going to be just like the movie, and I didn't, but I felt I needed to support anyway. It was incredibly well done. Just, I want to commend Suzy Jeffords, who is the drama or the theater instructor there, just a fabulous production. I will say one thing that came out of it, and I know that we have other places designated as our performing arts high school, but three of their seniors are, have been nominated for Jerry Herman Awards, Ashlyn Cunningham, Sadie Gillan, and Aidan Fredrickson. And basically, they will be performing at the Pantages to be considered for Jerry Herman. They have to write an essay, there's a resume, headshots, they have to do a song from the show, they have to do another song that shows off their voicing, and ultimately, they will all be part of the opening number at the awards held May 5th at the Pantages. So if any of you wanted to go attend and see some of Simi high school kids in action, I just wanted to mention that. And what, and what is, anyway, and if any of them are actually selected as award recipients, then they go to New York for the Jimmy's, and I'm told that the Jerry Herman Awards are equivalent to the high school Tonys. So I, anyway, I just wanted to share that fun things happening in, in Simi Valley. On Sunday, April 21st, I attended John's tea party, where also Mayor Protem Rocky Rhodes was there serving, and I was there playing the harp. We were just doing our behind-the-scenes civic duty for a wonderful Rotarian fundraiser for wonderful causes. And I wanted to mention one thing that's going on, and of course, today, appreciated the interviews of the outstanding candidates that we were able to visit with today, but tonight, the Royal High School, and this is all about Royal High School, DeeDee.
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, we're our Royal alum, but the girls' lacrosse team is being honored as the highest GPA average in CIF, Southern CIF, and they are down at the Angels game, pre-game, being honored on the ball field for their outstanding academic performance. So I just wanted to commend our youth here in Simi Valley. Congratulations. Keep doing it. That concludes my report.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a short week. On Sunday, I attended the Royal High School Seventh Annual Car Show. It kind of rolled down to me because everyone else was busy, but I told them they were lucky because I'm the only Royal alumni on the council, so it was a good thing that I was there. A great turnout. They had some of the best raffle items I've seen in a long time. I mean, they had some nice raffle items. We won tickets to the Thousand Oaks Theater. So my grandson thinks he's going to go see a movie, but we'll have to explain it to him. But they did a great job. Congrats to them. Thank you for, Mr. Mayor, for being busy, so I was able to represent you. We had a great time, and that's all for my week.
Councilmember Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Mayor Protem Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, April 17th through 19th, I attended Cal Cities in Sacramento. It's made up of representatives from nearly all of California's 482 cities, and it was their Leaders Summit at the Convention Center. I attended in an effort to learn what some of the other cities were doing and to solve some of the problems we all deal with, affordable housing, homelessness, crime, et cetera. These were topics discussed and presented, and I left with either an idea that we were ahead of the curve or a new idea that we could, we could apply. I had three significant meetings in addition to the lectures and networking. First, I met with Assemblywoman Jackie Irwin. I thanked her for a couple of pieces of legislation she's introduced that will benefit our city. I met with Senator Henry Stern, and I confirmed that he existed, and thanked him for, for meeting with me. He was working on the Senate floor, so he was very gracious with his time coming out into the hallway multiple times to, to meet. Then we talked about a tax bill that I'd like him to support, and informed him of my current positions on SCAG and Clean Power Alliance in hopes that he might choose to engage with the city a little bit more. I then met with our city lobbyists, the Gonzalez and Sons. We talked for over an hour on what was going on in the city and how our relationship works because I was unfamiliar with city lobbying. Also found out that we bond. Their father, who started the company, is a dairy farmer who got sort of pushed into politics and got elected and then became a lobbyist. My family comes from the Oregon coast, dairy farmers, and the only other elected in my family background is my uncle, who became Tillamook County Commissioner for the same reason of being pushed in to work on dairy prices. So that we bonded there. Oh, on a personal note, that Friday night, I actually stayed over in Sacramento and had dinner with my soon-to-be 99-year-old dad, because every dinner is precious. And on Sunday, April 21st, I was a waiter at the Simi Sunset Rotary Tea Party, joint of Tea Party, where I was assigned to the table with our staff, which is very uncomfortable for them, me pouring champagne and them deciding whether it's a good idea to partake. But that includes my report.
And mine's short and sweet. Wednesday, attended Economic Development Committee, and Thursday, the ADA Period Transit Committee, and I have nothing to report on either one. Call for any future agenda items? No? Okay. Excuse me. Well, then, I am going to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Jacob Fuerte, LA Fire Department recruit, and Donald Anthony Sabino, Kathy Morrison's father. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Have a good evening.